Daily symptom monitoring and temperature checks. Bullet point three, at least three feet distancing within the classroom when everyone is wearing their mask. There should be physically distancing at all times. Bullet point four cohorts placing students into small groups to help contain the spread and foster efficient contact tracing in case of exposure to someone who has tested positive for COVID-19. Bullet point five, hand hygiene. Six, stay home when sick and get tested. Bullet point seven ventilation. Bullet point eight cleaning and disinfecting. Bullet point nine coordination with the OST Public Health Authority and contact contact tracers regarding positive cases and close contacts. Bullet point 10, reporting positive cases to the Oglala Sioux Tribal Public Health Authority, including communication protocol that abides by applicable privacy laws. Bullet point 11 quarantine and isolation protocol. Bullet point 12, fully vaccinated to get tested three to five days after exposure regardless of whether they have symptoms or not. Bullet point 13, six foot distancing between people while to the removal of masks. B vaccination. Educational institutions shall include a COVID-19 vaccination requirement in their safety plans. The Oglala Sioux Tribe requires that all in school face-to-face students five years and older get vaccinated against COVID-19 and show proof to the school's administration or its designee on or before April eighth, two thousand twenty-two unless an exemption from this policy has been granted, an accommodation or otherwise. Students who fail to comply with these requirements will be barred from entering the school and will be barred from participating in extracurricular activities. Educational institutions shall provide reasonable accommodations absent undue hardship to students with sincerely held religious beliefs, observances, or practices, disabilities, or medical conditions that conflict with receiving the vaccine or vaccines currently available. If a student believes he or she needs an accommodation, the student is responsible for submitting a written request for a reasonable accommodation from the educational institutions. C testing. Testing shall be included in safety plans and implemented upon the availability of tests and supplies. Testing includes coordination with the Oglala Sioux Tribal Public Health Authority and the Indian Health Services. Other tribal entities obtaining a clinical laboratory improvement amendments through the State Health Department, CLIA, waiver of the school will be doing their own testing onsite and parental informed consent. If an educational institution performs its own own testing, the educational institution shall provide the results to the Oglala Sioux Tribal Public Health Authority. D sports and other high-risk extracurricular activities. A. High-risk sports and activities include close contact sports such as football, basketball, wrestling, and any activity where there is shouting singing activities that cause heavy acceleration with breathing. B participation in high-risk sports and high-risk activities shall be limited to only those who are fully vaccinated. C due to breakthrough cases, screening for symptoms and temperature taking shall be done prior to participating in or leaving for the activity. D no person with symptoms or temperature of one hundred point four or more shall be allowed to travel and shall be immediately isolated and tested for COVID-19. E masking shall be required when traveling on buses while indoors or in crowded spaces. Masks are not required during play. F any gatherings of non-vaccinated students, staff, or public attending the activity shall be in accordance with the tribe's risk alert level and the school's safety plan. Five shelter in place order. The safety plan shall include a provision to abide by a shelter in place order. Six hybrid and distance learning. The safety plan shall include a hybrid model and distance learning in the event of potential reservation lockdown. Need for mass quarantine and may provide an unvaccinated students pursuant to tribal health order. Seven worker safety. Worker safety measures should also be addressed in the school safety plan and it is recommended to look at the OSHA guidance on mitigating and preventing the spread of COVID-19 in the workplace for further guidance. Eight limit visitation. Limit non-essential visitors, volunteers, and activities involving external groups or organizations in accordance with the tribe's risk alert levels. Allowance for the vaccine vaccinated with masking distancing and hand hygiene can be part of the plan. Nine risk alert level. When community transmission is high and the vaccination rate is low, students are more likely to come to school while infectious and transmit the virus to others in the school. When a multi-layered prevention strategy is in place, there is limited spread of the virus in the school setting. The school's safety plan must correlate with the tribe's risk alert level. Ten monitoring. Every educational institution shall insert ensure that it has a sufficient number of employees to perform all measures listed effectively and in a manner that ensures the safety of the public and employees. Every educational institution shall ensure that it has a sufficient number of personnel to control access, maintain order, and enforce social distancing of at least three feet with mask wearing and six feet while eating without masks. Educational institutions shall ensure that all employees are made aware of these required procedures. There shall be a self-monitoring for compliance and strict adherence with the safety plan by each school establishing their own COVID-19 response team. The Oglala Sioux Tribal Public Health Authority and or COVID-19 Response Team may do walkthrough monitoring at any time to ensure the safety plan is strictly adhered to. Large school events, number eleven, large school events. Large school events shall include events that are attended by more than fifty people. The school's safety plan for large school events shall correlate with the recommended actions of the tribe's risk alert level and community transmission rate. Safety plans shall include large school events if the educational institution intends on hosting large school events. Twelve compliance and civil penalties. The non-compliance with the school's safety plan shall result in a civil violation with the fine of bullet point one first violation, five thousand dollars civil fine. Bullet point two, second and subsequent violations, five thousand dollars civil fine, distance learning only, and cancellation of all extracurricular activities for fourteen calendar days from the date of violation. Bullet point three citations may be appealed to tribal court. Thirteen effective date. This educational institution's COVID-19 health order shall go into effect immediately and shall supersede repeal and replace ordinance number two thousand fifty-seven, September one, two thousand twenty-one. Educational health order. Ordinance number twenty-one zero-three, January four, two thousand twenty-one, extracurricular plans. Ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-six, September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, school plans. And ordinance twenty-two twenty-four, February twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two, vaccine mandate. And this educational institution's COVID-19 health order shall remain in effect until it is specifically rescinded. Certification.
Uh so there's a a new question, Councilman Carlo.
My question is regard to twelve compliance and civil penalties. Can you explain that a little bit better because? So if uh an employee of the school is the person who violates this by not following this, is that what we're saying? The whole the school itself is in violation? Or is it the individual in the classroom or somewhere who is not enforcing it?
Uh Councilwoman, go ahead.
Thank you, if you if you don't mind, um Councilman Canoyer, if I can respond to that. So the reasoning for this ordinance is the discussion we had in education committee was to combine all these ordinances because there was a lot of confusion because one conflicted with the other. And what we asked is that they combine them, so it'd be one document, one working document. So these fines were and these um a lot of these were in those ordinances already. And what this is doing is consolidating them. So when it's regarding the fine and the distance learning, that's in regards to the school and not the individual.
Uh Councilman, still got the.
I just want clarification, I mean if an employee is the one that's violating it, then the school itself is going to be fined, right?
Correct, because a lot of these ordinances were um they weren't adhering to the school's safety plans that were set forth. And all this does is enforce it.
I also see in here, you know, that you have periodic uh times when you can go into the schools and make sure that they're following this, so I appreciate that part of it too.
Uh thank you, Councilman, uh Councilwoman Carlo.
Thank you, Chair. Um I guess my question is, I I don't sit on education committee and I apologize for that, but um had the tribal education department, our Dana's program, or any of the schools have input into this so they are aware of this? I mean, um we passed this today and then tonight we get home and we're gonna get phone calls. So I just wanna know if they they had a, you know, a part of this and we're we're totally aware.
So the Dana, um Dana, the committee monitor and the attorneys, they did all meet together. They did notify the schools because that was one of the biggest concerns are the schools being, are the schools involved in this? Because they need to be made aware of it. So we ensured that they did work together, that they did include the schools as well.
Uh additional questions?
Correct.
All right, uh Councilwoman Spatter, do you wanna?
Um unless Councilwoman Canoyer wants to motion to approve it, I'll second it or.
Motion.
My motion made seconded by Councilman Spatter, uh further discussion, hearing or seeing none online, or I'm sorry, Councilman Steele, you have your hand up? Uh Councilman Steele, did you have your hand up? Councilman Steele.
Yeah, my um my question's in regards to um to um like um community use, is that included in these plans? Um because I know uh there was a situation where we had community members that wanted to utilize our gym because it's only building for uh uh I think it was at one knee celebration, they normally feed here, but they told them that because the the um tribes ordinance in regards to the color code, you only allowed certain people in. But they also said it was also up to the schools and what they included in their plan. So I wanted to know when you talked about large gatherings, you said fifty or more, if that was just in regards to activities or, I mean, school activities or just or community usage?
Uh Vice Chairman, do you wanna answer that?
Yeah, number eight says limit visitation. I'll read it again, limit non-essential visitors, volunteers, and activities involving external groups or organizations in accordance with the tribe's risk alert levels. Allowance for the vaccination vaccinated with masking distancing and hygiene can be part of the plan.
Uh Councilman Steele, do you have any?
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, I didn't I didn't hear that part.
Okay, thank you. Uh further questions, hearing or seeing none, Secretary, will you call a vote, please, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh, yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora White Horse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yep.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Of course, yes.
Uh council that passes unanimous eighteen four zero against, thank you, uh Vice Chair for your items. Um moving on to uh Finance Committee, Chairwoman, do you wanna?
Thank you. The first is a resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to nominate Councilmember Cora White Horse to the Department of Interior Secretary's Tribal Advisory Committee. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four. And under Article Three of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the constitution and bylaws of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article Four Sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of the of persons on the Pinewood Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas on February twenty-second, February two thousand twenty-two, the Department of Interior announced that Secretary Deb Holland will convene a Secretary's Tribal Advisory Committee. And whereas the Department of Interior has announced at the deadline to submit nominations for tribal leaders to serve on the Secretary's Tribal Advisory Committee is May ninth, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas the members of the Secretary's Tribal Advisory Committee will advise the Secretary about tribal needs and will consult on the implementation of Department of the Interior programs and funding. And whereas the Tribal Council has determined that it is essential for the Secretary's Tribal Advisory Committee to have representation from the Great Plains region to ensure that the needs of the Great Plains tribes are met and their issues adequately addressed. And whereas the Tribal Council member Cora White Horse has the skills and experience necessary to be a powerful advocate for the Great Plains region and to be an effective member of the Secretary's Tribal Advisory Committee because Tribal Council member Cora White Horse has been on the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council for five administrations with six years as chair of the Tribal Council's Finance Committee. Participates in countless regional and national level meetings as an elected official of the tribe to raise and discuss issues affecting tribes and native people, works on solutions to resolve those issues and otherwise promotes tribal sovereignty and the general welfare of native persons. And whereas the Tribal Council has determined that the Tribal Council member Cora White Horse would be an active and effective representative for the Great Plains region. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby nominates Councilmember Cora White Horse to serve on the United States Department of Interior's Secretary's Tribal Advisory Committee.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Yellowboy, seconded by Councilwoman Carlo. Any discussion? Hearing or seeing none, Secretary, we call a vote, please.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora White Horse.
Not voting.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior. Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Uh council that passes seventy, yes, we're not voting, thank you, Council, uh Chairman, you're next, are you?
Thank you. Um number three or C. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council requesting drawdown funds from the land buyback account held by the Office of the Trust Funds Management within the Office of the Special Trustee for American Indians Department of the Interior in the amount of one million dollars. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five in accordance with the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four. And under Article Three of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council has been advised that the total holdings in the land buyback account held by the Office of Trust Funds Management within the Office of Special Trustee for American Indians Department of the Interior are one million one hundred seventy-four thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-five cents as of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council recommended adoption of this resolution to authorize drawdown, a drawdown from the land buyback account in the amount of one million dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby requests a drawdown of one million dollars from the land buyback account held by the Office of Trust Funds Management within the Office of the Special Trustee for American Indians Department of the Interior. And be it further resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council requests that the funds be transferred to the general fund account of the Oglala Sioux Tribe at First National Bank in Gordon, Nebraska, consistent with instructions to be provided by the Treasurer of the Oglala Sioux Tribe in a separate letter to fiduciary trust officer of the Pinewood Agency of the Office of Special Trustee for American Indians, including the name of the financial institution in which the account is held, the account number and the routing number. Motion to approve and just a a note, the account number is included in the um resolution, but we were advised not to read the account numbers over the air.
Okay, a motion to approve is a second, seconded by Vice Chair Yellowboy. Uh any discussion on this, hearing or seeing none online or in person, Secretary, we call a vote, please.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora White Horse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Uh council that passes unanimous eighteen four zero against, uh thank you, Council, Chairman, you're next, are you?
Thank you. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council requesting drawdown of funds from the range account held by the Office of Trust Funds Management within the Office of the Special Trustee for American Indians Department of the Interior in the amount of one million dollars. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five in accordance with the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four and under Article Three of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Constitution. The Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council has been advised that the total holdings in the range account held by the Office of Trust Funds Management within the Office of the Special Trustee for American Indians Department of the Interior are one million two hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-six cents as of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And whereas on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council recommended adoption of this resolution to authorize a drawdown from the range account in the amount of one million dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby requests a drawdown of one million dollars from the range account held by the Office of Trust Funds Management within the Office of Special Trustee for American Indians Department of the Interior. And be it further resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council requests that the funds be transferred to the general fund account of the Oglala Sioux Tribe at First National Bank in Gordon, Nebraska, consistent with the instructions to be provided by the Treasurer of the Oglala Sioux Tribe in a separate letter to fiduciary trust officer of the Pinewood Agency of the Office of Special Trustee for American Indians, including the name of the financial institution in which the account is held, the account number and the routing number. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, uh seconded by Councilman Hawkins. Any discussion on this, hearing or seeing none, uh Secretary, we call a vote, please, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora White Horse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yep.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yep, yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Wesley Hawkins, I missed you, thank you.
Council that passes unanimous eighteen four zero against, thank you, Council, Chairman, you're next, are you?
Thank you, um Tyler, you wanna read the next one? It's number five in your packet.
Ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to provide one hundred forty-four thousand in an in American Rescue Plan Act coronavirus state physical recovery fund monies to Oyate Tetcha Project. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five one two three. And under Article Three of the Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the constitution and bylaws of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article Four Sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pinewood Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency, the federal government enacted American enacted the American Rescue Plan ARP Act, Public Law one one seven dash two, which establishes the coronavirus state physical recovery fund, FRF, to be administered by the U.S. Department of the Treasury of the Treasury. And whereas the tribe has received payments from the FRF, and whereas the. And whereas the ARP Act states that tribal governments may use FRF payments, among other things, to cover costs incurred by the tribe government by December thirty-first two thousand twenty-four to respond to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease two thousand nineteen, COVID nineteen, or its negative economic impacts. ARP Act subsection six oh-two C one B. And whereas under the Treasury's Department's regulations implementing the FRF, the tribe may use the FRF funds, among other things, to provide assistance to nonprofit organizations to improve COVID nineteen mitigation measures, including COVID nineteen testing and vaccination programs. Thirty-one CFR subsection thirty-five dot six B three IA. And the tribe may provide assurance, or excuse me, assistance to nonprofit organizations to mitigate financial hardships such as declines in revenue or increased costs. Thirty-one CFR subsection thirty-five dot six B three IIC. And whereas nonprofit organizations operating in a qualified census track on on or on a tribal lands presumed to be disproportionately impacted by the public health emergency or its negative negative economic impacts. Thirty-one CFR subsection thirty-five dot six B two IIC. And whereas the tribe may use the FRF payments for program services, capital expenditures, and other assistance that is provided to a disproportionately impacted household, population, or community, including investments in communities to promote, improve health outcomes to the public and public safety, such as parks, recreation facilities, and programs that increase access to health, healthy foods. Thirty-one CFR subsection thirty-five dot six B three IA eleven. And whereas the tribal membership, tribal member household and populations on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation that receive services from the Oglala Sioux Tribe are presumed to be disproportionately impacted by the public health emergency or its negative negative economic impacts. Since and whereas the Oyate Tetcha Project is a five oh-one C three certified nonprofit organization on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation that promotes the well-being of children and their families through culture, education, recreation, and healthy programs. And whereas the Tribal Council has determined that the Oyate Tetcha Project needs FRF funding to complete the Oyate Takola Key Community Center, which which center will be used nineteen mitigation measures, including COVID nineteen testing and vaccination programs, and to provide recreation facilities and programs that increase increase access to healthy foods for tribal members, children, and households on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And whereas the Tribal Council has also determined that the Oyate Tetcha Project needs FRF funding to mitigate its economic and financial hardship during the COVID nineteen pandemic, including declines in revenue and increase in costs as a result of the pandemic. And whereas the Tribal Council has determined that the Oyate Tetcha Project has been disproportionately impacted by the COVID nineteen public health emergency or its negative negative economic impacts. And whereas on April fourteenth two thousand twenty-two, the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council approved the motion to recommend and forward this ordinance to the Tribal Council to provide one hundred forty-four thousand dollars in ARP Act funds, FRF, to the Oyate Tetcha Project for purposes set forth herein. Now therefore be it ordained that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby approves the allocation of one hundred forty-four thousand dollars in assistance from the tribe's coronavirus state physical recovery fund, FRF payments to the Oyate Tetcha Project to complete the Oyate Takola Key Community Center in Kyle, South Dakota, on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, which which center will be used, among other things, to implement COVID nineteen mitigation measures, including COVID nineteen testing and vaccination programs, and to provide recreation, recreation facilities and programs that increase access to healthy foods for tribal members, children's, children and household on the reservation. And be it further ordained that the Oyate Tetcha Project shall provide monthly reports to the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council with copies to the Tribal Treasurer regarding its uses of funds allocated by this ordinance. And such report shall be provided on or before the fifth day of each month, beginning in May of two thousand twenty-two and continuing thereafter until the funds are expended. Motion.
All right, so a motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second, second by. I think Ryan, no, Ryan, and then second by Councilman Canoyer Junior, Councilman Watkins, and Councilman, or Vice Chair Yellow Boy. Uh, any discussion on this? Hearing or seeing none? Secretary, we call the vote, please.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear. Yes. Richard Ironcloud.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Is it too late to table? Yes.
Council passes eighteen four zero against. Thank you, Council. Chairman, you're next.
Thank you. Um, the next is a resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council authorizing the Prairie Wind Casino to enter into a contract with the extreme with Extreme Spray Proles and Foundation DBA Extreme Foundation Repair and Concrete Lifting Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars for the repair of the foundation at the Prairie Wind Casino and Hotel. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four and under Article Three of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribe Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas Article Four, Sections one F, one K, one M, and one W of the Tribal Constitution empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas pursuant to Article Four, Section one T of the Constitution of the Tribal Council of the Constitution, the Tribal Council is vested with authority to delegate to subordinate boards or officers any of the enumerated powers in Article Four, Section one, reserving the right to review any action taken by virtue of such delegated power. And whereas the Economic and Business Development Committee is the duly delegated standing committee of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe vested with authority to oversee all operational matters of the Prairie Wind Casino and Hotel. And whereas the casino and hotel have issued with their foundations, have had issues with their foundations and problems with drainage. And whereas on February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, representatives from Extreme Spray Proles and Foundation DBA Extreme Foundation and Concrete Lifting made a proposal to members of the Economic and Business Development Committee and Bill Puyer, General Manager, and a proposed contract is attached hereto as Exhibit A. And whereas the Economic and Business Development Committee, there's too many N's in there, so take that second one out. End. Whereas the Economic and Business Development Committee in a regular meeting held on April first, two thousand twenty-two, approved this resolution and forwarded to the Finance Committee for review. And whereas the Finance Committee in a regular meeting held on April seventh, two thousand twenty-two, approved this resolution and forwarded it to the Tribal Council. And whereas the Finance Committee in a special meeting held in on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, authorized certain amendments set forth herein. And whereas the Prairie Wind Casino has advised the Tribal Council that it has complied with all applicable procurement procedures and requirements. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe is hereby authorized hereby authorizes the Prairie Wind Casino to enter into a contract for the lifting of the foundation and correction of drainage issues at the Prairie Wind Casino and Hotel to Extreme Spray Proles and Foundation DBA Extreme Foundation and Concrete Lifting Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars. And the amendment that was authorized was to um remove the president's name from the contract because normally the president does not sign contracts for the casino. So that was the amendment that was authorized. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve as amended, uh, second by Councilman Hawkins and Councilman Canoyer Junior. Uh, any discussion on this? Hearing or seeing none? Uh, Secretary, we call the vote, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear. Yes. Richard Ironcloud.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Uh, Council passes eighteen four zero against. Thank you, Council. Chairman, you're next.
Thank you. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe amending the legal services contract of Patricia Marks and Peebles, Kidder, Bergen, and Robinson, and authorizing the firm to bring litigation against the United States for its failure to fulfill its legal obligations to provide the law enforcement and other public safety related services required to fully protect the members of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and the presidents and the residents, not presidents, the residents of and visitors to the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is organized in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four and has adopted a federally approved constitution and bylaws. And whereas pursuant to Article Three of the tribal of that tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the legally authorized governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Four, Section one F of that same tribal constitution authorizes the Tribal Council to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe, and Section one S authorizes the Tribal Council to regulate the procedures of the tribe itself and other tribal agencies. And whereas the tribal, the Oglala Sioux Tribe has an existing July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one contract with the law firm of Peebles, Kidder, Bergen, and Robinson for the services of Patricia Marks, Esquire, and other attorneys in the firm. And whereas pursuant to that legal services, Ms. Marks and the firm has been representing the tribe in its efforts to obtain obtain adequate public safety funding and services from the US Department of Interior under PL nine-three dash six-three-eight contracts. And whereas the DOI has refused to enter into a new law enforcement and criminal investigations contracts with the tribe which fulfill its trust responsibility and legal and moral obligations to protect the tribe and its members. Whereas the tribe has determined that in order to protect the safety of its tribal members and law enforcement officers, it has no choice but to refuse the last PL ninety-three six-three-eight contract offered in March, two thousand twenty-two by DOI for law enforcement and criminal investigation services and file suit in federal court to enforce its legal rights. And whereas the Tribal Council has further determined that because of their vast experience with tribe with the tribe's law enforcement issues with the representing and with representing federally recognized tribes in federal court, Patricia Marks and Peebles, Kidder, Bergen, and Robinson are the appropriate attorneys to file this litigation. And whereas while Peebles, Kidder, Bergen, and Robinson's legal services are already authorized by the tribe's existing contract with that firm, both parties agree that it is in the best interest of the tribe to enact this resolution and adopt the attached amendments to the firm's July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one contract to ensure that both parties' rights and responsibilities are further detailed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby formally adopts the attached amendments to the tribe's existing July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-one contract with the firm of with the law firm of Peebles, Kidder, Bergen, and Robinson, and directs the firm to file one or more new lawsuits against the United States and the US Department of Interior to enforce the Oglala Sioux Tribe's treaty and legal rights to adequate law enforcement, criminal investigation, detention, and other public safety issues. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve second by Council, our Vice Chair, uh, Yellow Boy and Councilman Canoyer Junior and Councilman Hawkins. And Councilman Rodriguez. Uh, is there a further discussion on this? Hearing or seeing none online or in person? Uh, Secretary, we call the vote, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Hurrah.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear. Yes. Richard Ironcloud.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Council passes eighteen four zero against. Thank you, Council. Uh, Chairman, you're next.
Um, number eight or?
That be H in the packet?
H in the packet. Um, the attorneys asked if we could um do that tomorrow.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then we have resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council to approve the annual aid to tribal government budget for the for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four and under Article Three of the Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Whereas Article Four, Section one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protecting protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe receives annual fund And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe receives annual funding from the Bureau of Indian Affairs, also known as Aid to Tribal Government Funds, and per the Bureau of Indian Affairs, such funds are to assist tribal nations in the development and maintenance of strong, stable tribal governments capable of administering quality programs and developing economies in their respective communities. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe uses its ATG funds for, among other things, program costs such as staffing to execute tribal government activities, and has used such funds in the president's office to help provide for the development of tribal policy, administrative processes, assistance, and advice to the development, in the development of comprehensive planning and priority setting for the administration of BIA and tribal programs. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe desires to re-contract for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two its OST Legislative Liaison Contract Number one-nine AV zero-one-zero-one-one, with no change to the program's scope of work for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two and for a budget of one hundred thirty thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe has prepared a scope of work, budget, and justification for its FY two thousand and twenty-two recontracting request. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby approves the tribal, the tribe's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two recontracting request to the Bureau of Indian Affairs for the annual aid to tribal government monies for the OST Legislative Liaison and ATG Public Relations as set forth in the attached budget, scope of work, and budget justification. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Councilwoman Carlo and Councilman Hawkins. Uh any discussion in this? Hearing or seeing none? Secretary, will you call the vote, please? Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Yes. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyar Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear? Yes. Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh Council, that motion passed again. Thank you, Council. Uh Chairman, your, I think it's the last item, last regular item?
Um, I, I'm sorry, but the last item is the COVID vaccination incentive amendments. And um I was just requested to hold that until tomorrow because they're still finalizing the policies for the off reservation.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, we could do those.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Okay, um, so Council, I think we're gonna go to five today, or do you guys wanna break, or do you just wanna keep going? Just keep going, okay, just keep going. Okay, so we'll move on to HHS. Uh Chairman Jumping Eagle, do you wanna go?
Thank you, Chair. So the first one is Resolution Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the Tribal House LLC, AKA Tribal EM, PLLC, All-Inclusive Service Agreement for Temporary Healthcare Professional Coverage for Native Women's Healthcare. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under the Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five, USC subsection fifty-one, twenty-three, by adopting a federally, federally approved constitution and bylaws. And under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article four, Sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pineridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the OST Native Women's Healthcare Clinic is a PL ninety-three dash six-thirty-eight tribal program providing obstetrics and gynecology, gyno, gynecological healthcare services to the Native American population in Rapid City, South Dakota. And whereas the OST Native Women's Healthcare Clinic is in need of staffing coverage to assist in providing healthcare services. And whereas the Tribal House LLC, AKA Tribal EM, PLLC, provides temporary healthcare staffing services to healthcare facilities. And whereas the Tribal House LLC has been providing services for the Native Women's Healthcare Clinic in Rapid City, and the Native Women's Healthcare desires to continue working with Tribal House LLC to provide staffing coverage. And whereas the Health and Human Services Committee has reviewed the agreement and determines that the Tribal House LLC has the experience and expertise to provide the needed services. And whereas on April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Health and Human Services Committee met with a quorum present and by motion and vote recommends that Tribal Council approve of the Tribal House LLC agreement for staffing services for Native Women's Healthcare Clinic. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the Tribal House LLC, AKA Tribal EM, PLLC, Agreement for Temporary Staffing Services for the OST Native Women's Healthcare Clinic as attached and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein. And be it further resolved that the Tribal Council hereby delegates authority to the Tribal President or in his absence, the Vice President, to sign this resolution and to execute any documents necessary to ef- effectuate this agreement. Motion.
Second.
Motion made, second by Councilwoman Carlo. Any discussion on this? Hearing or seeing none online or in person? Um Secretary, will you call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Yes. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyar Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yep.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear? Yes. Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Council, that motion passes eighteen four zero against. Thank you, Council. Uh Chairman, your next one?
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to oppose the proposed withdrawals of previously authorized COVID relief funding to fund HR four three seventy-three, the Bipartisan COVID Supplemental Appropriations Act, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution in thirty-five, in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five, USC subsection fifty-one, twenty-three, and and under Article three of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the constitution and bylaws of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article four, Sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pineridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the United States Senate has recently released the text of HR forty-three seventy-three, the Bipartisan COVID Supplemental Appropriations Act, two thousand and twenty-two, and whereas Congress proposes to fund the COVID relief that HR forty-three seventy-three would authorize by withdrawing funds from spending authorizations of coronavirus aid relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, and the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, prior COVID relief bills. And whereas HR forty-three seventy-three proposed offset withdrawals would take back hundreds of millions of dollars of COVID relief funds previously promised to Indian country. And whereas such withdrawals would constitute additional broken promises made to Indian country by the United States. And whereas Indian country desperately needs the previously authorized COVID relief funding promised by the CARES Act and ARPA. And it also needs additional COVID relief funding and resources. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe believes that the money used to fund additional COVID COVID relief bills should be raised from new sources. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe resolutely believes that the money to fund additional COVID relief must not be raised by withdrawing funds already promised. And whereas if funds could not be appropriated from the local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund because of a language drafting error, the appropriate solution is to amend the statutory language to ensure that the funding goes to tribal nations, not to withdraw and reappropriate previously committed funds elsewhere. Now therefore be it resolved that while the Oglala Sioux Tribe supports additional COVID relief, it formally records its opposition to the proposed withdrawals of previously authorized COVID relief funding to fund HR four-three-seven-three, and be it further resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribe supports additional COVID relief to Indian country, provided that authorizing bill is not funded by taking money from Indian country. Motion.
Motion made, second by Councilwoman Whitehorse and Councilman Hawkins. Uh any discussion on this? Hearing or seeing none? Secretary, will you call the vote, please? Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Yes. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyar Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross? Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear? Yes. Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh Council, that passes seventeen. Yes, we're not voting. Thank you, Council. Um Chairman, Jumping Eagle, you have, well, I think you have a couple more items in the two-thirds, right?
No, that's it.
Well, that's it, okay.
Our, one, two-thirds, but.
Alright. Okay. Okay. Um, yeah, we could do the two-thirds, so um yeah, so we're at the end of the, well, we got a few items that would come up tomorrow, Council, so we'll just bring those tomorrow, but um Chairman Whitehorse, are you ready to, oh, go ahead?
That, that last resolution that was passed? Can, can um you send that to um Jennifer Hughes right away? And um can we, do we need a motion to authorize her to write a letter from you, or can you just get a letter so we could get that out?
Yeah, I could.
To the.
I'll text you right after we get done, so, and then we can make sure that, and we'll get that to her, like he said, so, okay.
Right away, thank you.
Yeah. Um, further discussion on that? Okay. So um Chairman, I think we, the secretary just passed out the two-thirds items. Um Chairman, are you ready to present all those items? Okay, cool.
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Tribal Council scheduling an advisory referendum vote on July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, on the question of whether the Oglala Sioux Tribe should enter into a contract under the Indian Self-Determination and Education Assistance Act, Public Law ninety-three dash six-thirty-eight, as amended, to assume the authority and federal funding to perform the programs, services, functions, and activities for the Pineridge Service Unit Comprehensive Healthcare Facility, and authorizing a set aside of thirty thousand dollars from the General Fund to carry out community education regarding the referendum vote, and directing the Oglala Sioux Tribe Election Commission to prepare a budget for the referendum vote. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four by the by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws, and under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article four, Sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pineridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Indian Health Service is a federal agency that currently provides direct healthcare services to eligible recipients on the Pineridge Reservation through the Pineridge Service Unit Comprehensive Healthcare Facility. And whereas the Indian Self-Determination and Education Assistance Act, PL ninety-three dash six-thirty-eight, hereafter six-thirty-eight, allows tribes to enter into contracts or agreements to assume the provision of healthcare services with federal funds going to the tribe to carry out those services. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is and has been dissatisfied with the services provided by the Indian Health Service and is reviewing possible actions that may be taken to address the issues and would like to obtain information as to whether entering into a six-thirty-eight contract is a good option to consider and would it be supported by its membership. And whereas on February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, the Tribal Council took action to approve the activation of the Election Commission to run an advisory referendum on the vote, referendum vote on the question of whether the tribe should enter into a six-thirty-eight contract to assume or take over the authority and federal funding to perform the programs, services, functions, and activities PSFAs for the Pineridge Service Unit Comprehensive Healthcare Facility. And whereas on April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, at a joint meeting of the Health and Human Services Committee of the Tribal Council and the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council, the Oglala Sioux Tribe Election Commission recommended conducting the advisory referendum vote on July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas on April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Health and Human Services Committee recommended community education regarding PL ninety-three-six-thirty-eight, and the Finance Committee reviewed the expenditure for the community education and by motion and vote recommended that thirty thousand dollars be set aside to cover the costs associated with printing, meeting places, food, and compensation for the education team with funding from the General Fund. And whereas on April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Finance Committee by motion and vote recommended that the Oglala Sioux Tribe Election Commission prepare a budget for the advisory referendum vote and present it to the Finance Committee for review. Now therefore that, that's, that part is not right. Um, when the Election Commission comes back, it's supposed to be um um, the Election Commission prepares a budget for the advisory referendum vote and present it to the Executive Board for review. Therefore and approval, actually. Therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribe does hereby authorize a referendum vote on the following advisory question. Should the Oglala Sioux Tribe enter into a contract with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services under the Indian Self-Determination Act and Education Assistance Act, Public Law ninety-three dash six-thirty-eight, as amended, to take over the authority and federal funding to perform the programs, services, functions, and activities of the Pineridge Service Unit Comprehensive Healthcare Facility of the Indian Health Service? And be it further resolved that the Tribal Council does hereby approve and authorize thirty thousand dollars from the General Fund to be set aside for community education on the Indian Self-Determination and Education Assistance Act, PL ninety-three-six-thirty-eight, as amended, and how it would apply to the Oglala Sioux Tribe and Indian Health Service Pineridge Service Unit Comprehensive Healthcare Facility. Be it further resolved that the Health Administrator shall develop the budget and present it to the Executive Committee for Approval. And be it further resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribe Election Commission is directed to prepare a budget for the advisory referendum vote and to present it to the that one is okay. And to present it to the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council for review. If the Finance Committee recommends approval of the budget, it shall forward the budget to the Executive Committee for final approval. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Hawkins and Councilman Canoyer Junior. Is there any discussion on this?
I I kind of have a question on that last.
Go ahead, Chairman.
Steve, are you on? Or Rayanne? Either one of you?
Is there any legal counsel on? Rayanne, are you on?
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay, Rayanne, in that last, be it further resolved of this resolution that Steve sent, it says that the Election Commission should bring the budget back to Finance Committee and then on to Executive Board, but don't they just take it directly to Executive Board? Isn't that what the ordinance says?
Um, let me check the ordinance real quick. I'm I don't know off the top of my head.
Oh yeah, it does say by the Finance Committee and approved by the, okay, sorry, motion to approve as is.
Right, motion to approve as is, that's fine. It's been seconded, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? Secretary, will you call the vote please? Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse. Yes. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, eighteen forty against. Thank you. Chairman, you're next on it.
Thank you. Tyler, do you want to read that last one?
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council forgiving debt payments during the closure of the Prairie Wind Casino and Eastwind Casino due to the COVID-nineteen public health emergency. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five in accordance with the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four and under Article three of the Oglala Sioux Tribe's Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas under Article four, Sections one F, one K, one M, and one W of the Tribe Tribal Constitution power empowers the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas pursuant to Article four, Sections one T, Section one T of the Constitution, the Tribal Council is vested with the authority to delegate to subordinate boards or officers any of the enumerated powers of Article four, Section one, reserving the right to review any action taken by virtue of such delegated power. And whereas the Economic and Business Development Committee is a duly delegated standing committee of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, vested with the authority to oversee all operational matters of the Prairie Wind Casino, the casino. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council closed down the Prairie Wind and Eastwind Casinos on March twenty-second, two thousand twenty, due to the COVID-nineteen health emergency, and reopened on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas the Tribal Council Economic and Business Development Committee passed two motions on May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, to forgive debt payments for the Prairie Wind Casino during the COVID-nineteen closure. And whereas the unpaid two thousand twenty debt is one million four hundred eight thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars. And the unpaid two thousand twenty-one debt is one million sixteen thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars. And the total, and in that total was two million four hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars. And whereas the new debt required a debt reserve of two million seven hundred twenty thousand. And since this will be split of fifty-fifty between the tribe and the casino, we will apply the one million three hundred sixty-three thousand fifty percent of new allocated debt. And whereas the total debt for two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one is two million two hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-one minus the new allocation loan, the the new allocated loan, excuse me, of one million three hundred sixty equals one million sixty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-one. And whereas the one million sixty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-one is the remaining debt service owed to the tribe, and the casinos are asking for, and the casinos are asking for forgiveness of one million sixty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-one. And whereas this keeps the percentage of fifty-two percent of the casino and forty-eight percent of the tribe and of the eighteen million dollar loan, new loan, the casino will be responsible for nine million three hundred sixty thousand, and the tribe will be responsible for eight hundred sixty-four, eight million six hundred forty thousand. And whereas the Prairie Wind Casino did pay utility assistance of a hundred twenty-five thousand in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, and will assist monetarily with the two thousand twenty-two Oglala Nation Fair and Pawal, and will continue in the future based on the availability of revenue to provide utility assistance and help sponsor the Oglala Nation Fair in Pawal. And whereas on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council by motion and vote recommended approval of this resolution. And now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council now forgives the debt payments owed to the Oglala Sioux Tribe in the amount of one million sixty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-one because of the closure of the Prairie Wind Casino due to the COVID-nineteen public health emergency. Motion.
Motion made, seconded by Chairman Whitehorse and Councilman Hawkins. Any discussion on this? Hearing or seeing none online or in person? Secretary, will you call the vote please?
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Counsel, that passes eighteen forty against. Thank you Counsel. Thank you Chairman for finance. I think you have a couple more items tomorrow, but, yeah, okay, all right, cool, deal. So moving on, OST Education Committee, Vice Chair Canoyer, are you prepared?
Thank you Chair. The first item resolution excuse me, resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council requesting the Bureau of Indian Education to clarify the specific items in twenty-five CFR that were included in the Bureau of Indian Education waiver granted on a specific date and specifically for the time, for the number of instructional hours considered in the full-time educational program. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe has adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December tenth, nineteen thirty-five in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five USC subsection four seven six, and under Article three subsection one of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, and whereas the Tribal Constitution authorizes the Tribal Council in Article four, Section one F, to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, and whereas Bureau of Indian Education granted a waiver to the Bureau of Indian Education-funded schools that were not able to meet all of the BIE, Bureau of Indian Education educational requirements during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and whereas these requirements were not specifically listed but should have included the number of required instructional hours for each grade in twenty-five CFR subsection three nine point two one four. The Bureau of Indian Education-funded schools, and whereas the Regional Associate Director of the Bureau of Indian Education in Minneapolis, Minnesota, has informed the tribally-controlled schools on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation that they did not meet the instructional hours as required by the Bureau of Indian Education, when in fact the waiver has to have covered all requirements. Therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is requesting the Bureau of Indian Education Director, Tony Dearman, to inform the tribe immediately in writing that the number of instructional hours required were included in the waiver and that he informed the BIE, Bureau of Indian Education Regional Office of his specific waiver certification. Motion.
Certification, seconded by Councilman Rodriguez. Any discussion on this? Go ahead, Councilwoman. Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah, I don't think we have that one under Youth Affairs.
This would be under Education. I'm not sure if they
We don't have it.
You didn't get it passed out. Maybe, did everybody get a copy? Okay.
We have the the updated two thirds added items, but we don't have the resolution itself.
Not the, not the paperwork. Okay. Okay. So okay, she's okay, she's forwarding it right now, so. So did anybody get the other education items?
They're all together.
All together, okay. So maybe we should just actually probably stop right there, and then we'll just take a break and make sure everybody gets them, so, and so we'll, 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 we'll just recess with that motion. That motion will still be on the floor when we come back tomorrow, and then make sure that everybody gets it, and then we'll just vote on it to tomorrow. That's okay, so.
You should get it now, because I just forwarded.
I'm not reading that again.
Yeah, no, you want to read it again. So yeah, so we'll just recess. So that's, so tomorrow, we'll, we'll come back at ten, and then and then that will be on the floor, that motion. And be sure to read that and make sure you get the other education. And all copies will be available tomorrow. So, uh, Councilman Jumping Eagle?
Chair, can we start at ten?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll start at ten, so. So depending on quorum, depending on quorum, if you have quorum, so, okay. So anyway, so yeah, so we'll adjourn. Okay, so we're adjourned the meeting at four fifty-three. Be safe, everyone. Thanks for getting through the agenda today, and we'll come back tomorrow.
Ten o'clock, no zooming in.
Yeah, ten o'clock.
On Ryan.
So ten o'clock tomorrow, so, yeah, so. Yeah, you can leave your stuff. You can leave your stuff here, so, okay. Be safe, everyone. Enjoy the weather out, and yeah, we'll be back tomorrow. Thank you to secretary staff. Thank you to the president's staff. Thank you, Keely.